So the yeast, you can't really see it, but there's little tiny particles in here. As soon as we add the water, we're gonna smell the bread starting to... And what is called is you bloom the yeast. It's called blooming the yeast. Now, the water we're gonna add is three cups of water, but it's not hot water and it's not cold water.
That's right.
It's lukewarm water because use hot water, it will kill the yeast. Cold water will not let it bloom. So we're using just nice tepid, warm water. So you can feel, we always like to let our cooking friends fill the water so they know how it's like. And already, already it smells like bread. It smells great. So this is called wafering. And what you do whenever you wanna smell something is just take the air and pass it, pass it over to you and you can smell wonderful things when you're cooking and that sort of thing. So wafering, it smells like bread. We're gonna go ahead and start stirring it up. We like to use wooden spoons to stir. The only other thing that we're gonna add is flour and salt. So we're gonna add some kosher salt. We talked about kosher salt earlier. And we're only gonna add one tablespoon of kosher salt. Now, this is gonna make a lot of bread. So one tablespoon of salt will not hurt you. It's gonna be okay. We think bread needs a little bit of salt. If you taste it and you think you like it a little sweeter, then add a little sugar. Sugar can help just make, turn bread into wonderful things. Okay, so now we're gonna add the abundance of flour. We're gonna actually add six and a half cups of flour. That's not gonna fit in there. Six and a half cups of flour. And it's all purpose flour. And the reason we're gonna do... Now, normally when you're gonna do that is because we need a lot of flour in this to make a lot of bread. You can have this recipe if you want to, but trust me, you will not want to because you're gonna love this bread. So what we're gonna do is we just stir it up. This is a no knead bread. Kneading means mixing with your hands. So we're just gonna keep stirring. This is all you do is stir it in, stir it in. That's two, right? So we keep stirring, stirring, stirring. This is a great children's activity. So don't think you can't do it because you can. There's three. Is that three? Three. So three, gotta reach to the bottom. Four, and... Now, I will tell you when you're making bread, it depends, the amount of flour you use depends on the humidity in the air. If it's very humid in the air, then you're gonna need a little extra flour. But we're gonna keep going with our flour, keep mixing. You see, it's getting a little thicker, but not thick enough yet. So this is gonna be a little sticky. It's gonna be sticky when we finish making it. It's not gonna make into a dough that it's really hard. And I'll tell you why we want it to be sticky in just a minute. So what we're gonna do, there's six, right? And now we're gonna do another half. And you can kinda look, I don't know if you can see, but if you can look at the consistency of the dough, all you have to do, whoopsie, you try to keep the dough, try to keep the flour in the bowl. All you have to do is keep mixing it together. I'll let you do that. And then all we're gonna do next is we're gonna cover it with a little Saran Wrap and we're gonna put it in the refrigerator. No kneading, that's it. Just mix it together. You can see it's still a little sticky to the touch. So I'll show you what we're gonna do to take care of that in just a minute. We're gonna mix it up, cover it with Saran Wrap, and put it in the refrigerator. Now, it needs two hours to rise. So you can either leave it on your countertop if you need it right away, stick it in your refrigerator, and let it stay in your refrigerator up to two weeks, just like this.
All right. Calling to order this meeting of the Bristol, Tennessee City Council, January 7th, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Keen?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin?
Here.
I wanna welcome everyone here and thank you for attending tonight. And thank you always for your interest in city government. We really appreciate it. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities is made available to you upon entering the room. As we go forward on tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet was provided for, at the entrance, for individuals desiring to address City Council during appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. So first, I would like to, we're really excited tonight to have our guests from the YWCA. And they're gonna do a presentation with our first proclamation. And so with that, we've asked Ms. Kathy Fiegans to do the invocation and the YWCA Tech Girls to do the pledge. If you'll please stand, we'll start with the invocation and then follow with the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for our many blessings. We are grateful for the opportunity to work with our city leaders for peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. Our prayer for this new year is that you will continue to bless us with clear vision and purpose as we work to uphold these principles. And as we look to the future, we pray that you will sustain and strengthen us in our work to promote social justice and the empowerment of women and children. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I collectively bid to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Kathy Fiegans is President of the YWCA Board of Directors. Mr. Sore, do you have any items to add to our agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
All right. Well, we have one proclamation on tonight's agenda, and it's a joint proclamation celebrating 2020 as the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which gave women right to vote. We would, and hopefully in our presentation, but we'll note that African-American women received the right to vote in 1965, but worked hard to get the right to, the 19th Amendment passed in 1920. So we're going to, Vice Mayor Malin Luttrell and I are gonna read the proclamation alternating. And then we'll present, I'll also say we have two copies. They're gonna stay, one at the YWCA for the year and one at the Bristol Library for folks to see.
Whereas Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States guided by the shared ideas of freedom, sovereignty, democracy, civil liberties, and individual rights, and...
Whereas from 1919 to 1920, the 66th Congress debated and state legislators considered an amendment to the Constitution to provide suffrage for women, and...
Whereas on May 21st, 1919, the House of Representatives approved a proposed amendment, followed by the Senate a few weeks later on June 4th, 1919, and...
Whereas the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendment were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States and worldwide, and...
Whereas the ratification of the 19th Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally change the role of women in the life of our nation, and...
Whereas August 18th, 2020 marks the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment by three-fourths of the states, providing the support necessary under Article 5 of the Constitution of the United States, and...
Whereas August 26th, 2020 marks the centennial of the 19th Amendment becoming a part of the Constitution of the United States, providing for women's suffrage, and...
Whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia celebrate the 100th anniversary and of the passage of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States.
Honored, two, honor the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment in further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States.
Three, reaffirm the opportunity for people in the United States to learn about and commemorate the efforts of women's suffrage movement and the role of women in our democracy, and...
Four, reaffirm the desire of the cities to continue strengthening democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. This 7th day of January 19, 2020, and signed by me, Margaret Fire Robin, and Neil Osborne, Bristol, Virginia Mayor. You have to come forward to receive it. Sorry. Okay, yeah, we can do our picture. Let's go ahead and do our picture and then we're gonna...
Thank you. On behalf of the YWCA and all the women of our city, I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor Fire Robin and the Bristol, Tennessee City Council members for acknowledging the importance of the Suffrage Centennial. The 19th Amendment ensures the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the, in, by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Thank you Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, for kicking off our Twin Cities 2020 Celebration with the presenting of this joint city proclamation. The YWCA is happy to lead this community celebration that honors the hard-won success of those who worked tirelessly to ensure women's voices were heard at the ballot box. The right to vote was a monumental step toward eliminating racism, empowering women, and the other values that are central to the YWCA's mission. Commemorative activities are being planned by numerous organizations, including historical, educational, and cultural arts components. A key part of the local celebration will be to document the stories of local residents who were active in the suffrage movement. Those with photos, articles, or stories regarding residents of Bristol who were instrumental in the movement are asked to share their information so a local collection can be developed. Other activities include partnering with Believe in Bristol to organize a suffragist march for Independence Day, for the Independence Day Parade, a historical presentation at the Bristol Train Station, partnering with the Bristol Historical Association, wall art to be created on a building in downtown, educational displays at the Public Library. The DAR is sponsoring a presentation by Stuart Harris, the host of Your Weekly Constitutional. Barter Theater will present Winter Wheat. The production by Catherine Bush, who is local, is the Tennessee story of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. The story is inspired by the true life events of Phoebe Burns and her son Harry. It is a must-see. And that's gonna be the summer, I think, June, the end of June through August. I will now introduce the YW Tech Girls, who will be followed by a very important historical guest, a suffragist, Mrs. Jack Arnold, to share a bit of the 19th Amendment history.
The first episode for Women's Suffrage was in 1848, when nearly 300 women and 40 men met in Seneca Falls, New York, to draw up the Declaration of Sentiments, which was the first American public protest against the political, economic, and social inequality of women. It was based on the language of the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal. Throughout the 1850s, numerous national women's rights conventions and meetings were held, making it a strong movement. With the outbreak of the Civil War, women suspended their activities on their own behalf and devoted energies to the noble purpose of freeing the slaves. Over the next 70 years, many bold and passionate women dedicated their lives to the suffrage Major national and international organizations came on the scene. In 1858, in, the YWCA was founded to protect and support women's issues, including the suffrage movement and labor laws affecting women and children. On June 4th, 1919, the 66th Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the U.S. It was now in the hands of the 48 states that a required ratification be won in three-fourths of those states. In the spring and summer of 1920, it becomes clear that there are 35 sure states that will ratify the amendment. All attention now turned to Nashville, Tennessee. What a twist, what a twist of fate. The southern state of Tennessee was the last hope of ratification for the 19th Amendment. The governor of Tennessee had to convene a special session for three weeks to ratify the so-called Susan B. Anthony Amendment. The amendment sailed to the Senate but stalled in the House. On the morning of August 18th, 1920, Harry Byrne was wearing the red rose of the Antis. The vote was taken. It proves the tie, 48 to 48. Anti-suffragists now called for a vote on the amendment itself. When the clerk droning the roll call reached the name of Harry T. Byrne, there is a moment of hesitation. Then, in a clear voice, Harry called aye. The tie was shattered. Tennessee's ratification of the 19th Amendment granted 27 million women the right to vote had passed.
Good evening, Mayor Fire Robin, and members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen. As you know, on this date, January the 7th, 1920, our country is abuzz with the talk of ratification of the proposed 19th Amendment. We are on the brink of an exciting and momentous occasion. If this amendment should be ratified, every woman throughout the country could vote in their very first presidential election of 1920. Just so you understand, women in 1920, under the law, faced what is called disabilities. In most states, we are not allowed to vote for federal offices. We cannot run or hold federal positions. We cannot serve on jury duty. But my dear friends, perhaps we will not be second-class citizens any longer. It is an exciting year ahead. The first episode for Women's Suffrage, as you heard, was in 1848. Susan B. Anthony came on the scene in 1851. Please absorb that date, 1848. Today is 1920. It will be a 72-year quest for the rights for women to vote. It is one of the great stories in American democracy, and one that we hear little about. In 1872, Susan B. Anthony walked into her local polling place and broke the law by dropping a paper ballot into a wooden box. She was arrested but not charged. She and the other women suffragists made speeches and did protest, but they decided that they were not making any progress. So they drafted an amendment to the Constitution. And as you heard, this was a one-word sentence amendment. The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on, on the count of sex. In 1878, this Susan B. Anthony Amendment was introduced to Congress. It sat in Congress for 40 years. It was re-induced, reintroduced in every succeeding Congress 21 times. During that time, many women and men worked to have this movement move forward. Finally, President Woodrow Wilson came out in favor of the Susan B. Anthony Amendment and in a speech to Congress said that women are not only vital to the war effort, but vital to peace. And he encouraged Congress to pass this 19th Amendment. And just a few months ago, June the 4th, 1919, the 66th Congress finally passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. But there was no celebration yet, for it was now in the hands of the 48 states to be ratified. The suffragists needed no fewer than 36 states. By the spring of 1920, they did finally realize there would be 35 sure states that would ratify this amendment. But where was the 36th state? All eyes turned to the southern state of Tennessee. And the governor did convene a special session in August for the good old boy, all-white, all-male legislature. As it happened in Tennessee, our East Tennessee played a major role in the ratification. Phoebe Byrne, a college-educated woman who lived in Niota, Tennessee, which is located between Knoxville and Chattanooga, she had lived on a farm. And she said her tenant farmer workers could go and vote. Some were illiterate, but she could not vote. She had a son, Harry, who was 24. He had served one term in the House. And he was aligned with the anti-suffragists. She was concerned about Harry and what he was thinking. And she read these bitter arguments by the anti-suffragists. And one morning, she sat down on the porch and she wrote a letter to Harry. And now Harry was in Nashville. And he was faced with a great dilemma as he read and reread his mother's words. And I quote from this famous letter, "Dear son, I've been waiting to see how you stood, but have not seen anything yet. Hurrah, and vote for suffrage. Don't keep them in doubt. Be a good boy and help Mrs. Cat, but the rat in ratification." Unquote. Harry did break the tie when the vote was taken, August the 18th, 1920. Tennessee's ratification passed, and 27 million women were given the right to vote. Eight days later, it became part of the U.S. Constitution, perhaps all because of a mother's letter to her son. Another interesting story from East Tennessee is right here in Bluff City. You may have heard of the Bluff City Mills. James Parks Worley was a state senator for 16 years. He was not for women's suffrages, suffrage, and his lovely wife, Anna Lee Keysworley, supported her husband. James was in Nashville in January of 1921, attending the General Session, when he died. The governor persuaded Anna to run for her husband's unexpired term of office. What a twist of fate. Anna was elected, and she was, became the first woman to serve in the General Assembly in Tennessee and in the South. What a twist of fate. Just a few months before, in August of 1920, the vote was taken and she could be able to run for that office. to run for that office. I close with a quote from a sculpture in Knoxville called "The Tennessee Woman's Suffrage Memorial." It says, "The young women of today, free to study, to speak, to write, to choose their occupation, should remember that every inch of this freedom was bought for them at a great price, the debt that each generation owes to the past, and we must pay to the future." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jack Arnold, and YWCA Tech Girls, and Kathy Waugh and Kathy Bickles. We appreciate you all so very much and look forward to a lot of different activities. I'll encourage, if there are people who have ideas or want to learn more, to contact the YWCA. And there is a planning group, and folks are welcome to become a part of that as well. And I'll also say that around us, people are planning different events, and Johnson City is planning a parade, and they have been learning about their history and women in their history who participated and are finding some very interesting things that will help them to enjoy celebrating later on during this year. So thank you very, very, very much. Next, we have Kevin Flannery, who's partnership specialist with the United States Census. We really appreciate his coming. We've been trying to emphasize our census that's coming up, and he's going to talk to us a little bit about the impact on our community and what some of the needs are in preparation, et cetera. So we appreciate your taking time to be with us this evening.
Thank you all for having me, Mayor, and council members. I definitely appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. I want to tell you thank you as well for everything you all have been doing this past year to support the census. I know you all have been listing it or mentioning it in several of your meetings, and we're going to try to make it the best one ever. That's our goal. So I won't go through the whole history of the census and all that tonight, because you are pretty up to speed on that, but I will kind of give you an update of where we're at. For the past year, we've kind of been in an education phase, as far as building local partners, organizations such as, whether it's community organizations, schools, faith-based, local government, and all in an effort to increase participation and let people know how important this is. The financial impact for this area, it's incredible, and most people don't even realize how much we are missing out on. So with that said, we are in a transition phase right now, getting ready to move into what we call the motivation phase. This is when you all are going to see a lot of PSAs, you're going to see a lot of national commercials. I believe they're going to be doing stuff with like the NCAA tournament, and I know the Memphis Grizzlies are doing stuff, a lot of athletics and celebrities, I guess. People are going to be pushing a lot to get out the word on this. I'll tell you why it's important. Well, number one, it's the law. But obviously, not everybody adheres to it like they should, and it has been since 1790. That's the way it's been. I can tell you, I deal with county mostly, as far as when we talk about numbers. Sullivan County's participation in 2010 was about 82% participation. That was mail-in only for their census survey. That didn't include any follow-up by enumerators that would come later and follow-up for people who hadn't responded. I can tell you, this time, the census is going to be a lot easier. We've moved ahead, as technology has. There's going to be three ways it's offered. You're going to receive a postcard in the mail. You'll be able to do it online. There will be information on how to do that. It'll take about 10 minutes. There's like nine questions. If anybody wants to see those questions, they are on the census.gov site. You can pull those up and look at them in advance. Nothing real difficult within it. Like I said, about 10 minutes. You can also do it by phone, or if you prefer, you can mail in a copy as well. So we think that's going to help a lot. And then we will have follow-up enumeration, probably starts about five weeks after the actual census date. The actual census date is April 1st. I know, federal government does it on April Fool's Day, so you've got to be wary if we're really going to do it. But we are, we are going to do it then. The postcards are going to go out around March 12th, so you'll probably be getting those mid-March. You don't have to wait till April 1st. That's just a hard date that we put out there to push for. If you get it, go ahead and do it, and nobody will ever come to your door, if you do that. Now, for people who don't respond one of those three ways, then yeah, there would be follow-up enumeration. We were trying to get a, our goal was to get a complete count snapshot of America, where we're at right now, 2020. So when I said we were at 82, Sullivan County was at 82%, that's 18% of the people did not respond last time. I can tell you, those numbers are better than some counties in Tennessee, but we can definitely do better. And when you look at the financial impact, 18% of this county's 20-some thousand people did not participate. So with that said, if you average out, and I'll share this, a George Washington University survey, you can find it, it's public knowledge. They average it around $1,100 for every person who does not participate. That's what it costs this area in funding from federal funds, which is huge. So if you look at that, that's 20-some million dollars a year that's being left on the table. It's similar with local counties. Most of the local counties here are within 82 to 84%, but you are right at 82 point something. So if we can increase that, I mean, that's more money that comes back. And those programs, you know, I want to thank Dr. Sisk for meeting with them today, because the schools are on board, and we're really trying to get the word out about kids being counted, because that's our lowest counted population. That funding, it goes to schools, to healthcare, to roads. That's not just general terms. That's how most people, when you think about the census, you're like, okay, so the federal government does this, right? There's documentation, or there's paperwork out there, and it's public record of where that money goes to. So it's going to go somewhere. It's not like if people don't participate, they'll say, oh, we're going to save this in case they want to participate next time. No, this money goes somewhere. We want it to come back here to the tri-cities. With that said, we really want kids counted, because we've missed over a million kids in the last census, and some of the reasons are grandparents may be raising the kids and think, well, I'm not the biological parent. I don't have to claim them. I wouldn't say claim, count them within our household. And you may have parents who are divorced, and it might be a custody thing where they think the other parent had claimed or counted the child. So we're really reaching out to daycares and preschools, and there's a lot of other groups where it's not just children, but I will tell you, that is the hardest to count. Obviously, they don't count themselves. But we want to thank the local school boards, all of the local county and city schools around here on board with us and helping, so we definitely appreciate that. I'll finish with, the results of this have to go back. The findings of the census have to go to the president's office by December 31st of this year. That's a lot of data and calculation has to be done, follow-up to make sure there wasn't duplication. There's a lot goes into that. And then probably around March, April of 2021 is when you would start seeing redistricting. Some, in 2010, some states that lost or gained congressional seats were Ohio. I think Ohio gained and North Carolina lost, or vice versa. Seeing I'm being recorded, and it's going to be on record. They both had a change. How's that? And there are several other states that did as well. So that's how you control that. That's why we keep equality within government is through this census of making sure you have a number of represented people in each area. One thing we're doing right now is we are in a huge hiring phase. You all have probably seen it, maybe either, some commercials are out now about it, and there's more coming. We're going to hire 500,000 people nationwide. Now, those are part-time, short-term positions. They might be two months, you might last up till May, June, but the local pay for all those was 13 to 50 an hour until about five or six weeks ago. It changed, and Sullivan County has went to $19 an hour. So Sullivan County is the highest-paying local county for the census. And some of the, there's several reasons why they had to do that. Unemployment is much lower now than it was in 2010. So in 2010, I believe we were, I think they may have already met their goal of recruiting by this time, and right now, we're definitely short of it. So they are increasing salaries, and for any of your people who have family members maybe in Washington County, Tennessee, they're 16.50 an hour. They had went up. The rest of them stayed the same. I'm not sure on the Virginia side. I can find out, though. But yeah, $19 an hour, and it's 58 cents mild fuel reimbursement. So we want to really get the word out about jobs, because we need to help. Any, you all have any questions?
No. We'll keep talking with our constituents and citizens in our community, and we appreciate the information about your need for folks to be employed, and great opportunity for people to make some extra money or add to the work that they already do for a short period of time. Appreciate you coming, and thank you, and we'll see you at our next census meeting.
Yeah, I'll be there. Thank you all so much. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a presentation on our comprehensive annual financial report, and Mr. Matt Hill, who's partner with the public accounting firm of Maudlin and Jenkins, is here to present the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2019. And if we like what we hear, we will clap for you as well.
I don't get too much applause, good, bad. As long as people are awake, I'm happy. So yeah, we have the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2019. You know, as you probably can see, it's about, getting up to about 280 printed pages now. I went back and looked, that's up about 70 pages from just seven years ago. So keeping up with the changes in accounting standards and how those need to be applied is certainly something that management, Terry and her staff, and Bill, and everybody does an excellent job of keeping tabs on, making sure that they know what needs to be disclosed in the financial statements. And we appreciate their work, because really, they drive the audit. So couldn't do it without them, and certainly thank them for what they've done. What we really do is come in, we test everything, and we go through and look at the numbers and look at your internal controls over financial reporting, and then we issue opinions. We actually issue three opinions. The first one is on the financial statements themselves, that we didn't have any material misstatements. We'll go through and look at individual balances, look at disclosures, that sort of thing, in order to make sure that they are materially correct. The second opinion that we issue is on your internal control over financial reporting. So in addition to just looking at the numbers, we also look at, you know, what controls are in place to make sure that these numbers are being reported correctly, that we're not just getting lucky at the end of the year, that we've got a process in place. The third opinion that we issue is on your federal grant money that you receive. If you receive in excess of really $750,000 in federal funds, then we're required to go through and do what's called a single audit, where we sit there and we look at each of the, what we call, major programs. We do testing on those programs in order to give an opinion on your compliance with the uniform guidance, which is the federal provisions. For all three of those opinions, we've issued an unmodified or what we call, clean opinion. So really, you know, as far as the opinions go, that's as good as we can do, is having those unmodified opinions. In addition, we're also required to report instances of non-compliance, of weaknesses in internal control that we perceive to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, that sort of thing, which we call audit findings, that have to be included as part of our report. And we don't have any audit findings either. So in terms of your report card, you know, it doesn't get much better than that. That's what we always are hoping for. Unfortunately, not every client gets that, but we are happy when we're able to essentially have a clean audit opinions with those, without any findings. In terms of the report itself, like I said, we're not, it's pretty bulky. We're not going to get too involved in the numbers. I know that's disappointing for some people. But I do want to point out a few things that are maybe not as common that you go over on a monthly basis, also just some things that I think are kind of good to point out that may be of interest in terms of when you're looking at and trying to decide, you know, what part of this do you really want to focus on. The first part is the management's discussion and analysis, and that starts on page 13 of the report. And the reason that I'm pointing out this management discussion analysis is because this is a condensed version of basically everything that's coming behind it. So it's going to sit there and kind of give you, hey, here are the summarized numbers that are actually in the financial statements. The other thing that allows you to do is give some context to the numbers. So it's not just a matter of, hey, you know, let's say, sales tax revenue went up this year compared to last year, or was different compared to budget. Management discussion analysis will then allow you to kind of go through and point a spotlight out and sort of show, hey, here are the reasons why we might have had some of these differences either between this year and last year, or this year and the current year budget. So it gives that context, it allows you to kind of have some idea about why things did the way they did, because financial statements themselves are more matter-of-fact. We don't give many opinions like, oh, well, this happened, and it was a good thing. But management does have sort of a little more leeway to kind of put some context in there. So I always like to kind of point that out. If you're going to look at one thing in here, if you don't want to read through all 280 pages, I would definitely encourage you to look through that. That being said, there are a couple of things that I want to look at in terms of the statements themselves. We look, starting on page 30. This is the statement of net position, and this is essentially like a balance sheet. So we've got our assets, these things that act like assets that we call deferred outflows of resources, our liabilities, what we owe, you know, in terms of debt, you know, current liabilities, that sort of thing. These deferred inflows of resources, which really kind of work like liabilities, and then we get to sort our debt position. And the reason that I want to point this out is, you know, as far as the financial statements and the things that you kind of look at on a regular basis, or on what we call the modified accrual basis of accounting, these are on a full accrual. And what essentially that means, and what we've got that's maybe different than what you would see every other month, is, for the most part, it's our fixed assets, our capital assets, property and equipment, land, that sort of thing, and also, it has all of our debt. So it essentially gives us more of an overview rather than the modified accrual base of accounting, which is really more used as a current snapshot of where we are. This is more long-term in terms of the thinking and the numbers involved. As you can see with our assets, we've got our governmental activities, which is pretty much a catch-all of everything that isn't what we call business type, your business type being electric, your stormwater, and some of the other ones. And so we've got our governmental activities, our business-type activities in our totals. As you can see, total assets are about $475 million. We've got these deferred outflows, about 12. The liabilities, which includes all of our debt and everything else, of about 104. Our total deferred inflows of resources, about 33. And then if we look at kind of our bottom line, you know, this is sort of what our net equity is. A total net position for business type and governmental entities is $351 million. Now, that's a big number. That doesn't represent cash or money that you have to spend. It's really driven a lot by kind of that first-line item. Net position, as you can see, that first item under there is net investment capital assets. Essentially, what that is, is the accounting standards boards want us to go through and want you to separate out and say, okay, yeah, here's what we've got in our equity, but how much of it is really essentially not being held as something that's going to drive revenues? And when we think about our land and our buildings and the equipment that we have, we're not directly using that in order to essentially generate money. So they don't want, they want the amount of net position for that amount backed out of there. So as you can see, that's that biggest chunk, that $211 million, which gives us, you know, sort of an unrestricted amount, which is sort of the thing where it's not in our capital, it's not part of our capital assets, it's not restricted for some other purpose, then we've got that unrestricted amount. It's about $110 million, 28 being on the governmental side, 81 being on the business-type activities. And I'll say, you know, that number, that unrestricted amount, it can vary wildly for a city of your size, for any, any really entity of your size. That number really, now that we've got, that we're looking more at pensions and health benefit plans, that number really is driven a lot more by how well-funded your pension and your health plan benefits are funded. With this type of positive unrestricted net position on the governmental funds, that goes to show that you've got your plans that are in really good funded status. So when you're looking at the long-term viability- So when you're looking at the long-term viability of the city, like I said, I can have a client that may have, you know, a big negative number there, and it's normally because it's a product of the funding of their pension plans. But the state plans are very well-funded on the pension side, and your OPEB plans are pretty well-funded as well. But I did want to point that out because it's not something that we probably talk about on a monthly basis when we're looking at the general fund and that sort of thing. The next page is our statement of activities. This is sort of like your revenue, your income statement, also on that full accrual basis of accounting. So most of the time, we see sort of, here's the general fund, here's everything kind of together. Here, we kind of do it, and it's a little bit unusual because we actually kind of go from left to right and then down. So when we're looking at the primary government, we've got our governmental activities, we've got our business-type activities, we actually start with expenses, then we essentially go across with revenues that are specified for that purpose, whether it's grant revenue or some charges for service, something like that, in order to come over to where essentially we get into this net expense revenue, and that's sort of more towards the right there for the governmental activities, the business-type activities. And as you can see, what that's really trying to do is isolate each particular area of general government and what their essentially, their net is. The fact that those are mostly negative for governmental activities, that's generally the way that every government works. Why? Because then we've got general revenues as we come down the page, things like property taxes and that sort of thing, that don't technically have to be specified for, like a grant is where it says, hey, the federal government's going to give us, you know, $2 million for this construction project. Property taxes, you kind of have a decision on how those get applied. So then we call those general revenues in order to come down to, excuse me, our change in net position. As you can see, our net position went up on both the governmental activities, the business-type activities, about 5.3 for governmental and 6.2 for business-type, to give us a positive in each of those. Again, you know, with the speed on a full accrual, you know, that total net position and the change in net position, there's so many things that can factor into that, that, you know, we want it to be a positive, but you know, this being a positive isn't nearly as important as like looking at your general fund. So like I said, once we get all the full accrual stuff in there, it can have some wild shifts in everything else. Of course, we'd rather that be a positive numbers, our net position is going up, but again, it's not really assigned anything one way or another. Other thing, if we slip, switch to the next page, this is where we get into the balance sheet of the governmental funds, and these are probably the numbers that you've seen, and so I'm not going to spend much time on it because this is on the modified accrual, this is kind of what your books are kept on during the year. But we do have our general fund, all of our major funds, 420, the general purpose school, school capital, and then our total non-major, which is kind of everything that doesn't meet the definition of a major. Really, the one that I focus on is the general fund, that's the one that's kind of the catch-all for everything where we don't have a specific restricted revenue stream. The general fund kind of catches all that. And kind of what we look at is, we've got this number, when we've got our fund balances, and our fund balance is sort of like our net position, it's our equity. I mean, as you can see in the general fund, you've got total fund balance of about $16.8 million, and the unassigned amount, which means it's not restricted, or it's not non-spendable or anything like that, it's sort of available for use, is about 15.8. Now, $15.8 million, how do we evaluate that? Well, I mean, kind of what a rule of thumb is when we're talking about your fund balance and how much should be in there for you to say that you've really got a healthy fund balance. The general rule is that you would have about two months' worth of expenditures of your budget included as part of that unassigned. For y'all, y'all are much higher than that, y'all are actually closer to about six months. So in terms of the ability to meet cash flow needs and everything else, y'all certainly have done a good job of being in a position to make sure that that fund balance is sufficient to make sure that we don't have any sort of issues with cash flows or anything else as part of our fiscal planning and budgeting process. We skip over now, I just kind of want to point out to page 37. This is where we've got the budget actual for the general fund. So when we look at all of our revenues and expenditures, we look, hey, here is what we actually budgeted, here's where we ended up at the end of the year, and then we've got a variance in there, good or bad. Nothing significant about this as far as the variances that really stick out to me. I think y'all do a pretty good job of the budgetary process, but again, if you had some question about the budget and then a variance or whatever, that's where going back to the MDA may help you out in determining, hey, why this number do this this year? So again, from my standpoint, nothing as far as significant variances that, you know, need to be discussed or anything like that, but I did want to point that out because that is something that you kind of want to make sure when you're budgeting and everything else, that you've got an idea of kind of where we ended up at the end of the year in comparison to what we actually did. That being said, really nothing else in the statements themselves that I want to point out. Once we get past the statements, we've got the footnotes. The footnotes essentially are just additional information on the financial statements themselves. There weren't any real significant changes in GASB standards this year, so the accounting standards didn't really change much, your footnotes didn't really change much. So there's nothing really that I want to go through and point out that, hey, this needs to be looked at, or, hey, we weren't reporting this this way before, and now because of standards, we are. Your footnotes are pretty much going to fall in line this year with where they were last year. The last thing that I do kind of want to point out is really towards the back, and let's see here. It starts on page 221. And it's got a tab that says statistical section. And the statistical section is really kind of, it's one of those things where you're involved in a voluntary program by the Government Finance Officers Association, where you submit this comprehensive annual financial report every year to them, and then they go through and grade it. And they either give you a certificate of excellence in financial reporting, or you don't get one. Y'all got one for last year's report, it's included as part of this comprehensive annual financial report. Again, you know, y'all are going above and beyond what's required by the state, what's required by the feds. Again, I don't know how many years in a row this has been that y'all have gotten that award for excellence in financial reporting, but certainly, that's a testament to management and the job that they do. But I do want to point this out because this is what GFOA, one of the things that they require, is some of the statistical information. And the reason that I like to point it out is not only does it have financial information, where it's got trends of, hey, here's what our change in net position has done over the last 10 years, you know, here's our composition of our fund balances over the last 10 years. It also provides some non-statistical information, things about property tax collections, demographic and economic information, things that sometimes can be useful, and maybe even more useful than just the hard numbers. So I did want to point that out as part of the process, none of them specifically that I want to look at, but certainly do like to make sure that y'all are aware that that information is in there. That being said, that's kind of everything that I want to talk about as far as the audit and the comprehensive annual financial report itself. I'll be happy to expand on anything, take any questions, whatever y'all want.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I think we're pretty happy that we have a boring report, for the most part.
I wouldn't call it boring, I think it's very exciting.
It is very exciting.
That it's as positive as it is.
It's very exciting, but not so exciting that we're in trouble. So we appreciate you very much, and also, we thank you for your work. And also, I think this is a great time to really highlight our finance staff, Tara, your work that you and your staff do, and then also, all of our city staff that have adhered to the budgets and all the different rules, et cetera. So we really appreciate Mr. Sora, your whole group of folks who work on this budget every day. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question. In looking at page 37, it shows total revenues, varies with final budget.
Let me get to the page 37.
I'm asking you. And so, just for general information, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, we show a positive revenues over budget of $570,027, is that correct?
I think that is correct.
So we, we finished with that.
And a large part of that is, is an increase in sales tax. There's also an increase in the state income tax, or the hall, the hall tax.
And the 420.
In the chapter 420.
Right.
Yeah, which would parallels really the, the sales tax that we receive from the local auction. The chapter 420 is the 10% contribution that we get from, from that incentive that's out there. So those are the, are the significant areas in which, in which there were increases.
I just, I just wanted to point that out while we were here. So that $570,027 found its way into...
That's the general fund.
The general fund, okay. So was it in any way part of that put into our reserve fund?
Yes, actually, the reserve fund went up about $670,000 because you have the increase in revenue, and then you have also what was not spent on the expenditure side that was previously budgeted. So, so that nets out in a position, the, I think, I think it was 16, right at $16.8 million in general fund balance, and that reflects an increase of about $670,000 from, from the previous year.
Right, and that additional $100,000 of savings, a lot of that was due to slippage?
Yeah.
I just think that when we're at this point in our meeting, and we have this kind of information, you know, we go through this in great detail. I think that there are some that may not think that we study this to the degree that we do, but I think it's real important, when we have this conference, it's a great report, but I think it's important to break it out, that we, we came out ahead, $670,000, and that was due to increased sales tax, an increase in our projections of the 420 tax, and...
The hall income tax.
The hall income tax, but the hall income tax, we all need to be aware of the fact that the hall income tax ends when, Mr. Sora?
That, well, sunsets at the end of 2021, so the last installment that we'll receive will be April 15th of 2022.
Okay, and so for those that may or may not know, the hall tax is actually a capital gains tax that through state legislation, we will no longer be collecting.
That's been, it was, it's always, or historically, it had been 6%, and that's being phased out 1% per year with it sunsetting at the end of 2021.
And so we have discussed in detail the fact that we will need to find additional revenues to take the place of the hall tax in our budget.
That's correct.
Okay. A lot of information here, and it's, this is a public document, correct?
Absolutely.
So I would encourage those that are interested in the financial state of our community to...
It's on our website.
It's on the website, comprehensive annual financial report.
I assume the library gets it eventually as well.
Each branch will have a copy.
A voca and main branch, awesome. So, thank you, Matt.
I think Matt's, Matt's already hit the road.
Good, he should.
He's on 81 by now.
He should, he should. So we appreciate everybody, everybody's attention to this. Yeah, also, I'll say in this, like Matt Hill pointed out, there's a lot of information that's not just financial information for the status of where we are. The same thing, our budget document is awesome, with how much information is provided in that budget, in that budget, that's not numbers, so it, it's very helpful to learn a lot. We have no public hearings on tonight's agenda. For the appearance of citizens, you know, we provide an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that's not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business. A response is likely not made immediately or at this time, because most of the time, we're not prepared, the city manager's not prepared to effectively respond to a concern. Different ways city manager may look into the matter and report back to city council, or have staff, or appropriate staff meet with citizens to see if concerns can be satisfied. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and not, non-transferable with other individuals. If we have groups, we encourage folks to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have a list of folks who are wishing to speak with us this evening, and John Cartwright, you are up for talking with us a little bit this evening.
John Cartwright, I own property at 650 Pennsylvania Avenue. I just did a recent drive through the neighborhood to point out some of the things that we have problems with, wanted to address with council. About seven or eight years ago, we had a situation that required us to have numerous meetings and storyboarding sessions to come up with the Fairmount neighborhood plan, and it came off pretty good for a couple of years, but now we forgot about it. And there's things in that plan that still haven't been addressed, and I guess that's why I'm here to talk about them. We've got a flood zone at Cypress Street and Kentucky Avenue that turns into a lake every time it rains. That's an ongoing situation that's been over 10 years. We have a homeless campground garbage dump area down here by the new bridge, complete with a treehouse that they've just erected. We've got a house in the 400 block that burned a year ago, that we can't seem to get torn down because it seems to be an architectural jewel, even though nobody could live in it. We've got other properties in the 900 block, three in particular, that in the last six months, people have spent quite a bit of money remodeling. So there's investment being made in the neighborhood. There's a lot of people in that neighborhood that are making investments, and we have a lot of potential to make more, but we need to clean up the problem properties that we have. That's just a small sampling of what's there. I'm asking the council to give us some emphasis, let's get back to the plan, let's find out what we can do to, to work it through. The city codes department, Better Property Board, we've worked on this, but some things we can't get pushed through, and things need to happen. When we have houses over there that are, that were originally single-family houses, and according to the zoning that we did seven or eight years ago, those houses are not supposed to be rentals. Now, I own rentals, I've owned them for over 35 years. But the houses we've got now, we're being used as, well, basically flop houses for people that come and go. You'd have to have somebody to write a program so you could keep up with who's in and out every other week. That's not fair to the people that do maintain good rental property. It's not fair to the citizens and the taxpayers of Bristol that we have that situation. I'm looking to you all to address it. One thing I'd like to have you pat on the back for, I know there was some discussion about the nonprofit funding that's shared between Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee. I really would like to know what the situation is, because this situation of, I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today, is not working. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your bringing attention. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to address council on anything that is not on the agenda? If not, I think we're ready for appointments. We have one appointment to our library board, and it's a term ending December 31st, 2022. The candidate is Jonathan Harden, and I believe Mr. Harden is here with us tonight. And would anybody like to speak in favor of Mr. Harden?
John's very active in multiple areas of our city, he's a great community leader, and I think he'll do real well on, on the library.
I currently serve with him on that board, so yes, he does a great job.
I think when you were first appointed, you were very interested in serving on the library board and expressed that. So, and I think you might be now serving as vice president of the board, so we appreciate your service for being an officer as well as serving on the board. And also, I'll say, we've, the library has a new director, started yesterday, Tanya Hestner, and we'll look forward for our council to meet her and library board meeting her as, as time goes forward, we're really excited. She comes to us from the Washington County, Virginia library system, so, and she previously worked in our several departments, but last in the teen department before, at our library before she went to Washington County. So she's familiar... before, at our library before she went to Washington County. So, uh, she's familiar with us. She loves Bristol and we're really excited to have her.
Ready? Fire Robin votes for Jonathan Harden, Turner votes for Jonathan Harden, Luttrell votes for Jonathan Harden, Keane votes for Jonathan Harden, and Powers votes for Jonathan Harden.
Mr. Harden, you are re-elected to the library board. Congratulations and again, thank you very much for serving in the board member capacity as well as, as an officer. So, um, the next item on our agenda is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one, amending chapter fifty of the city's code of ordinances as it applies to outdoor lighting. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, um, ordinance twenty dash one does amend section fifty dash thirty-one of the code of ordinances and this contains regulations related to the use of outdoor lighting. Lighting regulations apply to all commercial, industrial and multifamily residential properties. And the regulations stip- stipulate the maximum light level that is permitted at the property line of the adjacent property. The issue comes before you tonight as a request from, uh, the developers of Center Point seventy-four. As council is probably aware and as we discussed during our work session, this project is part of, is, is, while it has subdivided parcels within it or separate parcels within it, it's under one common ownership. And so there's, there is a desire by the developer for the, those internal lot lines to not be subject to the, to the conditions, uh, set forth in our regulations. Uh, staff agrees that, that if it is a common development, that that does make sense, uh, to move forward with that. Um, and if, uh, if you do approve this tonight on first reading, it will come back before you on second reading next month. And then Sheriff, uh, Young is here with us tonight to detail the issues on the foot candles and all the particulars, uh, in the amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fire Robin and council members. Um, I'll, I'll just keep my comments, um, a little bit brief. Um, this is, this is a bit of a straightforward, uh, change here to the city code, chapter, or section fifty dash thirty-one. Um, as Mr. Sora stated, this is the section of the code that governs, um, site lighting for commercial multifamily projects. It does not apply to single-family residences or duplexes, but, um, does govern the light trespass that leads a si- leaves a site, um, when developed commercially. Um, the code currently has stipulations that say that at, um, the property lines and it's property lines, just straightforward property lines, there's a certain limit, um, at which you can, you can light the property to that point. And there's a different limit, um, at, if you're adjacent to commercial properties in the right of way than if you're adjacent to, uh, residential properties. But what the code doesn't address is if it's an, it's a, a project that has multiple parcels within it. So some of our larger commercial projects like the Pinnacle or like Center Point that might have, um, a lot of different internal parcel lines that most of us don't experience when we're on the site, but they're there on paper. And certainly, um, when a site plan application comes into staff, the lighting plan or photometric plan is one of the items that staff reviews to make sure that it meets all city code and zoning ordinances. So, um, what, in looking at this and in talking with the developers, um, for Center Point, uh, what staff feels would be a reasonable, um, accommodation here is to provide an exception for projects that are common developments. And so, uh, within a common development that may have multiple parcels within it, um, at the boundary, at the periphery of the project, they would still be required to meet all the, um, the same lighting requirements as all other, uh, projects. But property lines that are internal to their development where they might have parking lots or landscape, um, different things like that, those, those internal property lines would not be held to that same standard. So, um, the proposal here tonight is just to have, provide an exception for, um, common developments and those internal property lines. Uh, the, the new language suggested is in yellow on the screen. So there's an exception and then there's also a definition, uh, to add a definition to, uh, the, the section that would define what a common development is. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer you questions or provide more detail.
Anybody have any questions? Uh, is there a motion to take action?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Anybody on council wish to talk about it? And just, just a reminder, yeah, most of these, uh, items on our agenda, we cover at work sessions. So we have, uh, opportunity to ask a lot of questions at that time. So this isn't the first time that we've seen, um, most of the items on, on our agendas. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, then, uh, Tara, I think we're ready. Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. Thank you. All right. The next is, um, ordinance nineteen thirteen, amending chapter ten of the city's code of ordinances as it relates to the tethering of dogs. Uh, Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this, um, ordinance?
Yes, Mayor, this is the second reading of ordinance nineteen dash thirteen and it does amend chapter ten of our code of ordinances as it relates to tethering of, uh, for dogs. Uh, there's a new subsection that, that is added, uh, with this ordinance, a section ten forty-six prohibiting the tethering of dogs between the hours of ten PM and six AM. This prodi- this prohibition may be waived by permit under conditions that the owner demonstrates a need for relief, uh, from the tethering prohibition due to their current work schedule. The permit then will designate a specific eight-hour period during a twenty-four-hour period in which the owner is unable to ta- to tether the dog. This was first considered, uh, or this was considered on first reading at your November fifth meeting. Uh, at that meeting, the, the ordinance nineteen thirteen was amended to include an exception for hunting and sporting dogs. This exception would also be administered through the permit process. The tethering, uh, prohibition, if approved, will become effective July the first of twenty twenty.
Great. Um, does anybody have any questions for staff?
I would like to say that there, perhaps I didn't express myself well. The, uh, part where it says prohibition may be waived by permit for hunting and sporting dogs, that was not my intent. Um, my intent was that it would have gone hand in glove with the second point, that the prohibition may be waived by permit if owner demonstrates need for relief due to current work schedule. Uh, it was that the permit will designate specific eight-hour period during each twenty-four hour period that the owner is unable to tether the dog if it has been designated as a sporting dog. Does that, does that clarify that to the point? It was not my intention by any means that any animal, any dog would be left on the tether for twenty-four hours. It's that all dogs would have, uh, a commiserate break. It's just the timing of the day that might be different.
So this would be consistent then with the work permit as, as, as you've indicated?
Exactly.
I think what would be required then would be an amendment of, of this ordinance during second reading.
So is it appropriate at this time that I make that amendment?
No, because this, uh, you're still in the staff question period?
Oh, so, sorry.
And so if there's been a motion to second, then you can move to amend.
The motion is still made.
You've still got some.
But she can do it tonight.
Yes.
As opposed to.
It can be done tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, uh, for staff?
Well, I think that, I mean, if, I know that this has been backed up by a month or so. I think that maybe extending for amending this to, say, August of giving everyone the opportunity to.
Come into compliance.
Come into compliance that, because I know it's been postponed.
Two months.
Two months. So we had July the first, is that what we have?
Right.
So.
Okay. So that'll be appropriate to amend that in just a minute if you want to.
I think procedurally, if, uh, and it's fine to amend it, but we probably need a motion, uh, on, on the second reading, uh, and a second, and then, then the amendments.
Begin the amendments.
Just procedurally.
Right, right. Okay, anybody else? Okay, if, um, so I think we can have, um, can I have a motion for approval?
If you make the motion, can you make an amendment to that motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that, uh, in support of ordinance nineteen thirteen and ordinance to amend chapter ten, animals of the code of ordinances by prohibiting tethering of dogs between certain hours unless otherwise permitted.
All right, is there a second?
Now, this includes the change we're talking about.
No, not yet. First you do a second.
We have to do this and then I'll come back with my amendment once we have a second. We have to have a second for it to go any further or it dies due to lack of a second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second and I understand there's probably two different amendments. So.
I would like to propose an amendment to include the permit for hunting and sporting dogs to be reflective in the same manner that, uh, so that there will be a permit with designated specific eight-hour period during each twenty-four hour period that the owner is unable to tether the dog. Does that make any sense? Do you understand what I'm asking for?
Yes. I think that what you're saying is there's a, at the end of subsection, little I, there's a sentence that says this permit will designate a specific eight-hour period in each twenty-four hour day when the dog is unable to tether the dog. You would like that sentence to be repeated at the end of subsection double I, little, little double I, sorry, small Romanate II.
Right. So that it's reflective that all, if it, if an animal is, a dog is determined to be a hunting dog and is registered as such, then the permit will designate the specific eight-hour period during each twenty-four hour period that the owner is unable to tether the dog. So that no dog under this ordinance would remain on the tether for twenty-four hours without a break.
All right. Just to clarify before I ask for a second, um, so after we get a second, then if there's discussion and then we will vote on this amendment and then if there's a second amendment, we will vote on that second amendment. And then we vote on all of it as amended.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I've had a workshop or two in parliamentary procedure, but our attorney is here to help us. So, okay, so we have an amendment. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have amendment and a second. Is there discussion on that amendment? If not, um, Tara, I think we're ready to vote on the amendment. Keane?
Epstein.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. All right. Um, and there's a second amendment to be proposed? Is that correct?
That's you, Vince.
Yes.
And do you want to, you have to say it.
The.
That we changed July.
Yeah, the July first to, um.
August first. Can we put that in the form of a motion?
Make a motion to change the effective date of the ordinance, um, to August the first, twenty twenty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on that? Seeing none, Tara, I think we're ready to vote on that amendment. Okay, Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. All right. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. We have a first and a second. So we, and we don't need to vote again on, on accepting those.
It includes the amendments.
We're ready to vote, vote for a final.
The entire body.
The entire thing as amended twice.
All right. Do we have any further discussion on this item? If not, then we're ready to vote on the, um, the ordinance as amended with the two different amendments.
Is anybody from?
Oh, is there anybody from the public who would wish to address council? Thank you, um, newer council member, you're on top of it.
Good catch.
Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address council on this item? Seeing none, now I think we're ready to vote. Keane?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. Thank you very much for our exercise in parliamentary procedure. All right. Um, and keeping me on track. Um, the ne- next we have a resolution, um, twenty dash one, awarding a bid for construction of sidewalk improvements on Virginia Avenue. Um, Mr. Sora, would you tell us about, I'll smile on this one. Smile, um, summarize this matter for the public.
I'm gonna, and I'm also gonna tag team with this with, with, uh, with Jacob Chandler, our city engineer. Uh, first I want to let you know that we have a low bid from Summers Taylor of Elizabethan, Tennessee in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. I'm going to get into the financial aspect of this, the grant match, what the city requirement will be after, after Jacob, uh, gives you a, a brief overview of the scope of the project.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
The Virginia Avenue pedestrian improvements, um, includes extending five-foot wide sidewalk on both sides of Virginia Avenue from the Bristol Housing Authority up to, uh, a point just short of East Cedar Street. Um, the project will include some grade work, uh, minor utility adjustments and, uh, some stormwater improvements. Um, you want to have any questions?
This has been in the works how long now?
Uh, it's over, it's, it's well over a year. We, we made a, a grant application through Tennessee Department of Transportation for this project, huh, eighteen to twenty-four months ago, I guess? Right, at two years. So, and it's, it, it's a good companion project with our East State Street, but once that finally authorized to proceed, uh, I mean, East Cedar Street rather, uh, project is, is, will pick up at the, at the northern limits, uh, of that project and then proceed south along Virginia Avenue to connect to the sidewalks, uh, that are, are, are currently at, in front of the Bristol Housing Authority developments just south of Hazelwood.
I think it's great to celebrate this. I have another question, not related to this, but it's a parallel question. Uh, the lavender lang apartments, uh, Bluff City Highway, we had talked about sidewalks there. Where are we with that?
I think we have received, uh, a favorable response and Tim, refresh my memory, we have received a fa- or Jacob, uh, we have received a favorable response to that. Uh, it's also an eighty-twenty cost share. We have it, we, and we have, uh, also engaged the firm of Manner and Craig, I believe, to do engineering design, uh, and that's, that's where we are. Jacob, if I'm, if I, if I'm off on that, let me know.
It's actually, uh, CDM Smith out of Knoxville. Uh, they're currently working on the NEPA documents. They've done a lot of existing survey work and, uh, they're working on their highway plans right now.
And for those that may or may not know, the eighty-twenty match is who's paying the eighty and who's paying the twenty?
Tennessee Department of Transportation pays eighty, the city pays twenty, but, but there's, there, there's moving parts of this one that I need to get into and I didn't want to put that on Jacob.
Right.
I'll, I'll deal with that aspect of this particular project.
Right.
Okay.
So when is this project going to start?
There's two approval processes, one that you all will go through tonight. Uh, Tennessee Department of Transportation is also reviewing bids, uh, at this and, and we could have waited till they approved it. However, there's a, there's a, a sunset in terms of the timeline for bid and award and, and pre-construction meeting. And in order for us to meet all of those, uh, timelines, we needed to go ahead and take action tonight. Now, if Tennessee Department of Transportation, for some reason, turns down these bids, then we'll be, then we'll be back where we are. So, and that, that, that could happen. Uh, as a, as, as part of the conversation tonight that I wanted you all to be fully briefed on, the project is higher than, than both the internal engineer's estimate and the design engineer's estimate. Um, I think our, our, our internal estimate was five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the bid came in at six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the Ten- the Tennessee Department of Transportation will be responsible for eighty percent of the grant application. So that's eighty percent of the, of the five, the five, the five, five thirty-one. So, so we're responsible for that twenty percent plus any overage, which is about ninety thousand dollars in this. So, uh, uh, an affirmative vote for this takes the hundred and, a hundred and six thousand of the original twenty percent, adds the nine, almost ninety-one thousand to it for our total commitment of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. There's also a companion resolution on our consent agenda for construction inspection, which Tennessee Department of Transportation requires third-party inspection on this and we will, we will also have the burden of that. So we're going to be somewhere, uh, south of three hundred thousand dollars on the project. Uh, it has always been our intent to take this out, out, out of fund reserve, of general fund reserve in terms of our match, uh, for the project. But I want to make sure the city council fully understands that, that the eighty-twenty, the bids did, then there were five bids. Uh, three of the bids were in the six hundred thousand range and then two substantially higher than that. So we feel like it was a good bid. It appears that, that there was, there was mobilization cost and traffic control, as well as vegetation removal. Those three items are the unit cost items that stuck out as being above what our engineer, both internal and our design engineer's estimates categorized the project to be.
When this was applied for, was this, of this area, was that where the grant was applied for, for this area? Did we pick the area, or was it for this particular area that we were able to apply for the grant?
We're, we are made aware of grant opportunities. This is a pedestrian area that is void of sidewalks.
Okay.
And you've got, you have a fair amount of people that walk both from the Fairmount area as well as the Housing Authority area to Food City and, and the commercial areas that are there. And so this, this facilitated pedestrian movement along that corridor. So it's a, it's a safety issue as much as anything in terms of, of creating that. So that prompted us to apply for the grant.
I'd say some of it maybe has, was with, when, when was this originally done, the 500, when we came up with the 500-some-thousand?
Well, when we made for the grant applications, that was approaching two years ago.
Two years ago. Let's say maybe part of it is concrete.
Could be. The unit costs weren't far off from our estimates on unit cost. It, it, the, the cost associated with those three items that are talked about in terms of the vegetation removal, traffic control, and mobilization, those were the things that stuck out to both our staff as well as our design engineers being beyond what they felt like was, was market. So, the fact that you've got five bids that, that, that are, are in that range, though, that, that drives, that drives the conversation in the other direction.
And when you talk about what's in our consent agenda, resolution 23?
Yes.
We're talking about $89,000, and that would cover progress, estimates, project completion, punch lists, material testing and sampling, final project inspection and preparation of final records.
That is correct, and T-Dot requires a T-Dot certified inspector to do the, to do this work. So that's the, if, if for some reason you decide not to do the project, then that would, then that should come off of the consent agenda. If you do approve the project, then that, then that needs to be approved as part of the consent agenda.
But I guess with T-Dot, they're looking at the original 522,000. So...
Yes, when, when, when T-Dot, when, when they, when they offer grant opportunities of that nature, then you have a host of communities that are competing for those grants. So they set aside X number of dollars for that particular project. We were fortunate to get the grant award, but then, but then they've allocated all of the funding when they do that. To the various communities that are competing for those grants. So, you know, that's the, that's...
Is that what the approval is that goes back to T-Dot?
It does, it does, yeah.
Just clarification, does this include curb, curb and gutter, or is this just sidewalk?
There is some curb and gutter work. It's not the whole corridor, but includes some of it.
So will the sidewalks just be taken with curb and guttering to a certain point and then just go into undressed sidewalk?
Could you repeat that?
Well, you said some of it did, so we have sidewalks with curb and guttering through, to a certain point, and then beyond that, does it turn into undressed sidewalks with no curb and guttering?
There's some existing curb that's already there, and then in certain spots, we were limited by room, so the edge of the sidewalk actually becomes the curb line. It's a monolithic section.
So from an aesthetic position, it will appear to be sidewalks with curbing the whole length?
Uh, not the whole length, some will be lowered across some of the driveways and the parking lots.
Okay.
So, which, I think, it should improve the appearance of that street as well as, as the safety. Yeah, I think originally when we talked about it, I commented on seeing folks with strollers and children trying to push through the grass, and one time went through there and there was somebody with a lawn, pushing a lawnmower in one of the lanes to avoid having to push it on the grass. Wasn't mowing, was transferring the lawnmower somewhere else. Anyway, I do think it's a highly trafficked area, and I'm just so pleased with both of these projects. I think they're very significant and will really make a big difference in our community. So, and just to clarify, the one on Bluff City Highway is just on one side of the road, not on both?
Yes.
And this is on both, which is ideal, is to have it on both sides of the road, so.
And I think a, a point, one reason why I asked how long we have been doing with this. I think it's important that our constituents understand that we are constantly being briefed on the projects and where we are in the projects, that there is very little that is put into action that we have not been hands-on, whether we voted on it or not, we have been consulted. And this has been two years in the making, and we have been involved every step of the way, and we've been kept informed every step of the way.
Okay, I had something else to say, but I just lost it. Anyway, um, oh, with that in mind, and since we're all over the place and not, and we're discussing, et cetera, can you give us an update on Cedar Street? We thought we might hear before Christmas, before the holidays.
We just didn't say which Christmas. Jake, I know you've been communicating with them.
So, um, we sent some quick claim deeds that we already signed to T-Dot, Region 1 in Knoxville. They forwarded those on to Nashville, General Counsel in Nashville is currently reviewing them, and then they'll need to pass that on to the Commissioner for their signature. Hopefully that'll occur in the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll get rightaway certifications then.
And then the next step is putting it to bid?
Yes.
Right, which is a lengthy process for a huge project.
Well, it'll be twenty, thirty days.
Yeah, you're gonna want it on the street at least 30 days for a project of that scope.
Great, great, and Cedar Street will have sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Yes.
That's gonna be tremendously exciting and tremendously pain while it's being done, so.
I have one other question, and that's, you know, I've had the privilege of sitting in the seat for six years, and when I ran, Cypress Street was flooded then. Where are we with Cypress Street?
Uh, the design's done, Permatile's currently making our structures, and then it's just a matter of finding the crew free to put the structure in the new storms that we're in.
What's our expected timeline?
Spring, yeah, spring.
Will someone get back in touch with Mr. Cartwright and tell him that it's going to be spring?
We've got one thing that, that is gonna be taken care of. We hope that the solution, that our engineering calculations work, so. Okay, so I think we've had a fair amount of discussion. Did we have a motion yet? No?
Motion to approve resolution 20-1, awarding the bid for Virginia Avenue pedestrian improvements pending T-Dot concurrence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody else on council want to say anything further? And is there anyone here tonight who would like to address counsel on this issue? Seeing none, Tara, I think we're ready to vote.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Letchell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes. All right, next we have consent agenda. Mr. Sora, if you will read the items.
Yes, ma'am. The first item on the agenda is consideration of our December 3rd City Council meeting minutes, then the minutes from the December 17th City Council work session. Resolution 20-2, awarding bid for the purchase of patrol vehicles. Resolution 20-3, authorizing entry into an engineering service agreement for Virginia Avenue pedestrian improvements. Resolution 20-4, awarding a bid for the purchase of pickup trucks. Resolution 20-5, awarding a bid for the purchase of one medium-sized sport utility vehicle. Resolution 20-6, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk fuel. Resolution 20-7, authorizing entry into an agreement for design services to construct a new parking lot in the 700 block of Shelby Street.
Are there any items that any member of city council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All right, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Tara, we're ready.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Letchell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes. All right, and tonight we have Dr. Tom Sisk, who's here, who's found a different seat in our, our auditorium here. We welcome you to catch us up a little bit after the holidays.
He has a new granddaughter.
He has a new granddaughter, and...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have two documents for you. First is a single-page document. It kinda gives you an overview of what we've been working on in the school system today. We were excited to welcome students back home to the schoolhouse from holiday. Over the Christmas break, we enjoyed the Holiday Hoops Women's Basketball Tournament and the Arby's Basketball Tournament, as well as Brawl in the Hall, which was a wrestling tournament. And I can't honestly tell you which group had the largest traffic jam problems for the city. But, uh, all three of those events were very well attended, and we were excited to see great community and regional participation in those events. There are a number of documents and things that we're working on. As part of our effort to reach out to the community and to get input as we develop a plan moving forward in the city-school system, we initiated something called Look, Listen, Learn, and Lead. As part of that, we distributed hundreds and hundreds of postcard-sized survey forms. We collected probably 70% of those back, and they're in a very thick stack right now at the Roundhouse, where next week we will start desegregating the, the data and, and looking at what people are looking forward to, what their expectations are for our schools, what they see as some of their priorities, and we hope to be able to incorporate that. And I'm not gonna read through all this because you'll have time to do that at your leisure, but you'll see a number of programs that are under construction and currently being reviewed. We have also attended a number of meetings, a number of activities. We've also been working with workforce development rather closely. We started our strategic plan process with SCORE. SCORE stands for State Collaborative on Reforming Education. They are a think tank based out of Knoxville, and so we sent a team there today, as a matter of fact, to begin that process. And so in the months coming, I will be engaging you and other civic leaders for input as we go forward to create both a strategic and five-year plan for the school system that attempts to meet the needs of our community. I also would point out that we are going to be working towards a facilities tour in the near future, and I'll be working with the city manager's office to coordinate and set that up in the very near future. The second document I gave to you also in draft form is called Bristol Bridges. This is going to kinda be our umbrella approach to career and college readiness. The areas that we're going to focus on, starting in August of this next school year, centered around reading proficiency at or above grade level for third graders, math proficiency at or above grade level in fourth grade. Growth and achievement gaps will be decreased in all student categories for at-risk subgroups. We're gonna be working with students to excel in our annual growth projections. We're going to aspire towards an ACT composite score of 24, which is a very ambitious standard. Our students will then work to achieve the work ethic diploma prior to graduation, and we're gonna be looking at expanding our dual enrollment programs. In the document, you see we use the actual picture of a key because we see these items as opening, opening the doors of opportunity for our young people. I would invite you to, to read through it as your leisure, but if you get to about halfway through, you'll see a section that's highlighted. Career technical education is something that I think many in this room already know I have a passion for. In fact, I sat in on a meeting today. We are going to be rolling out new career tech initiatives starting in the fall of next year with expectations of anywhere from five to nine new career tech programs being operational and available to our students. More information will be forthcoming in the next few weeks as we prepare our course guides and make those available to families. Areas of emphasis to me, obviously centered around the construction areas such as plumbing, electrical, carpentry. We are going to make a sincere effort to try to get our welding program and structural systems program back up, trying to get ahead of the teacher shortage problems that we are now experiencing in Tennessee. We are going to attempt to grow our own by starting to offer a teaching-as-profession career pathway as a pre-teaching program starting next year. You can expect to see us to expand our cybersecurity programs to take advantage of some of the best bandwidth in the country here in northeast Tennessee. And so there will probably be a number of announcements that I would see coming forward, probably after spring break as things are solidified. A number of courses will be added, some of them will be offered through a blended model. A blended model involves some hands-on instruction and some virtual instruction. Some of the instruction will be traditional stand and deliver, and then some will be purely online delivery. We think that we will be able to do that with modest staff realignment and very few new resources. Having worked in Alabama for so long, and not having the resources available to us there, we were able to do a lot of great things, but with the tremendous support that our city has already been so generous to provide, I feel like we will be in a position to roll forward with several of these initiatives. One of the things, I spoke to several of the staff members here prior to council meeting tonight, was the idea of, of putting together an academy concept that centers around tourism. And so we're gonna be looking at ways to, to put that together. We are meeting with the Tennessee Core Office to initialize a program called I-Square. It stands for the Industry Instructor, and again, more details provided in your packet for your reading pleasure. We're very excited about the opportunities that are before us. We are taking steps to address concerns about the flu. We have already put into place a number of initiatives to, or, that are really designed to mitigate the transfer of the germs. I was on a conference call today with Ballard Health and with a number of other area superintendents. And what makes this particular round of the flu particularly troublesome for us is that flu-like symptoms like fever are not evident on the onset. What we're being told is that they could be contagious for one or two days before they even have the, the high fever that we would associate with it. And by that point, they've already contaminated folks, and so we, we're gonna be looking at ways to, to try to do that. The contractor that we work with has already put additional resources into the building to increase the amount of cleanings, and we're doing what we can. Are there any questions that I can answer from the council about what, what we have going on in the schools?
A question I have, being a former educator, and I applaud the teaching-as-profession, K through 20, if needed. Have y'all considered, or would you consider, any type of early childhood trainings to provide licensing for in-home daycares or to provide some form of daycare at the high school? The reason that I ask is that the YW was here this evening, they have 84 positions on a sliding scale. There are only sliding scale childcare, and they have a waitlist of over 160 children right now.
Well, I can answer that in several ways because there were several pieces. Number one, as a pre-teaching program, the only credential that the young people in high school can get is a certification that allows them to work in a childcare facility. So, yes to that piece. Secondly, do we have a plan to put in place right now where we would offer a daycare facility? No, because we are... No, because we are, our career tech wing at Tennessee High is at capacity. And given the equipment that is in that region of the campus, I would be concerned about safety issues. However, saying that, I would certainly welcome an opportunity to create a partnership where as students progress through the four-course course of study, we could create an apprenticeship or partnership with area providers and help staff, which may alleviate some of the anxiety and expand the number of slots they're able to serve.
Great, thank you.
Yes ma'am. Can I answer any other questions? Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you very much. Right, I think Mr. Sora, it's...
Yes, I've got four dates that I'd like for you to be aware of and encourage you to participate in for the remainder of the month. On Monday, the 13th, at noon, that we'll have the joint meeting. This is a quarterly, second of our quarterly joint meetings with the Bristol-Virginia City Council. This one will be in Bristol-Virginia City Hall. And again, that will commence at noon. Also, on Friday, January the 17th, it's the annual Chamber of Commerce Award Luncheon that starts at 11:30. And it's held at the Holiday Inn at Exit 7. We do secure a table, so make sure that you RSVP with my office as far as your plans for attendance. On Tuesday, the 31st, we'll have our work session. This will begin our monthly work session. This one's different from what we usually do in terms of, this is our pre-budget work session. So this will start at 8:30. It will be in the nature center and the education room at our nature center at Steel Creek Park. And this generally takes the better part of the day. This gets into much deeper dive into the family finances, so to speak, than Matt had tonight. And we'll talk a lot about the questions that you had, as well as others. And we'll talk about a number of things, from capital projects and so forth throughout that day.
Mr. Sora?
Yes.
Not that, you know, it would change anything, but I have a conflict on Tuesday, January 31st and don't know if it would be possible to move it up from the...
This is 21st.
21st.
21st, okay. I'll be there.
I originally wrote down 31st.
I'm sorry.
But then I looked at the calendar and it's...
Okay, great.
I'm sorry.
I'll be there.
Okay. I've had a cough for the last couple of months, so that may be camouflaging the dates here. And then lastly, we'll have our annual Tri-Cities Legislative Event. This will be on Monday, the 27th, and Tuesday, the 28th. Certainly you're all encouraged to attend and participate in that event. And that's it.
So our normal scheduled work session on the 28th of January is switching that to the 21st.
Because of that, yes.
Yeah, but we had changed that back in November.
Okay.
All right, it's time for city council comments. And if it could be at your agreement, to start off our new year, we did this this morning in a meeting I was at, and I think it's a good idea, just to take a minute in your comments and say something that you are grateful for and start off our comments with that. So who wants to go first with any? I didn't ask anybody ahead of time, so that's putting y'all on the spot.
Well, I'm grateful for family and all the great things that have happened. Been a great holiday experience for us. And I'll say, a lot of friends in town. And so I was just going to ask, we had the, Mr. Cartwright brought up some stuff with the Fairmount area. What is our, what's our expectations for that? Well, it looked like there's about eight or 10 properties.
And I haven't had an opportunity to look at the properties, but codes enforcement is a process. And our codes enforcement officers will go to a particular property. And I'm not sure if any of these have enforcement action. They may all have enforcement action on them, but there is a process in which they work with the owner to bring it into compliance. It can end up in municipal court. If it's, there are also properties, if they are in disrepair, to the degree that repair is not an option, then they go before the, our Better Property Board. And our Better Property Board then can order a demolition and that. So there are moving parts in terms of how to deal with these. But none of them are quick.
I think sometimes that our friends and neighbors that are around it, you know, bring our attention to it and, you know, in the form of a complaint or whatever it may be. So I'd just like to request that we look at the properties and see if we can bring them up to code. And the last thing I'll say is go Vols. Now, I'm thankful for the Vols.
I'll go ahead and go next. You know, there are several things that I'm thankful for and always have been and always will be. First and foremost, it is family. Second, right now, something that's near and dear to my heart and I think a lot about it, the troops that's been deployed overseas. You know, it's a very tense situation going on in the world right now. And the other thing I'm very thankful for is our healthcare workers. And there's a lot of sickness, a lot of illness going on in this community and across the country. And, you know, thankful for all the work that they do. And then, you know, on another note, it's just that, you know, we're in a good place. Our city is in a good place. Our state's in a good place. And I think that, you know, we many times do not stop to reflect and think about all the good things that go on. It seems like we, a lot of times, tend to dwell on a lot of the negative. But, you know, going forward this year, I mean, let's say one thing, let's everybody think positive. And let's see what we can do to reach out and help one another. Thank you.
I'll go next. Of course, I feel very blessed to have the family that I have and to live in the community that we live in. And I think we become jaded to Maylin's point. We become jaded to the community that we live in because it is such a fine community. We're surrounded by natural beauty and we live, work, and play amongst people that I think for the most part genuinely care for one another. I'll just go through my responsibilities for this year. The BCM is finishing up with an exhibition by Marty Stewart. There'll be a film presentation to go along with that. I believe it's a week from Friday night, 6:30. Bristol Rhythm and Roots, I serve on that committee as well, and it's preparing for its 20th annual Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion. Some of the headliners have been announced outstanding. We're really excited. There'll be another announcement on February 14th that will round out the artists that will be appearing. And there'll be some new things. We're talking about doing some staging a little bit differently. I serve on the Sullivan County, as the Sullivan County Commission Liaison. They have their work session this Thursday, January 9th, and they'll have their general meeting next Thursday, January 16th. Theirs are streamed by the Video Guy if you're not able to attend. I also serve on Believe in Bristol. We met this morning. We're looking at keeping the events that we currently have very fresh and maybe trying to take on some new events to encourage multiple sectors of the region into our downtown. So we're real excited about that. I also serve on the Commission and Visitors Bureau. We met in December. One of their main concerns is hiring a new director. Not sure if that has been done yet. I haven't been made aware of that yet. And their biggest concern is three-year funding, as is the BCM and Believe in Bristol. So we're meeting, as Mr. Sora said, this Monday, and that's to be a large topic of conversation. I also have the privilege of serving as a member of the Network Sullivan County Partnership, which is constantly in motion about economic development, not only in Bristol and Sullivan County, but we have extended the offer to begin marketing the grade eight of Upper East Tennessee. We think that that's a great move. We have over 160 acres of developable land that's fully infrastructureed with a minimum of 10 gigabits and with TVA agreeing to further outfit capacity. We have, as an organization, over $41 million worth of investment to date. We also have a grant in the amount of $8 million in the Sullivan County Commission right now, $4 million of which will go to fund a rail spur in Partnership Park 2, which is absolutely tremendous. There is no other industrial park between Knoxville and Roanoke that has this capacity. Am I correct? Thank you. And in looking downtown, the Coin Building has begun to be taken down. There has been a lot of conversation as to exactly, you know, should it have tried to have been restored? Was it okay to take it down because it is an older building? But what is going up there is going to be tremendous with the access to 174 new parking places?
170.
170 new parking places. And there's been a lot of discussion about parking. And to be clear, this council has been kept fully informed every step of the way as to every aspect of parking downtown. We've been engaged in a major study of the downtown area that included counting every single parking place. And we know the number of residents and we know the number of businesses downtown. There seems to be concern that maybe we don't always know that finite number, but we know that these statistics are fluid and constantly changing. So to ask for an exact count would only be appropriate for the five minutes for which it was given. But we're real excited about all things downtown. We feel that we've really dug in. 600 State has been renovated. The Coin Building will be renovated. There's a new business going in at Piedmont and 7th Street. And that building is to be refurbished. So we're real excited about what this council has done downtown. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Tara. She's got a little shiny something on her finger tonight and is engaged, and congratulations.
Well, I don't, what was I supposed to do? No, I think we all have a lot to be grateful for and thankful for my family, our health, and, you know, the city we live in and our country. And I think we're all very blessed.
I just have a couple of things. One is in response to John Cartwright and Fairmount, two things. One is we depend on our citizens to bring issues to us because we can't see everything. And that's not just us, it's to our staff, et cetera, that we don't drive around all the time looking for things. So we really depend on residents who let us know where they see problems and what needs attention. I would hope though that we could sometime, and we'll talk about it with our goals, but that we could look at Fairmount, where it is now, and look at our plan and host a neighborhood meeting. We in Bristol, Tennessee, struggle to have neighborhood associations. There are other, Johnson City has great associations with their Tree Street. Bristol-Virginia has Solar Hill. We do have some subdivision organizations, but particularly our older neighborhoods and older subdivisions tend not to have active organizations. So I think it helps when the city takes a role and helps to facilitate some of that at times. The other is that I'll share is Martin Luther King Celebration Commemoration. This year is our third one in Bristol, and it will take place on Monday, the holiday. And we will gather, it's a little different this year. We're working with our city, both cities, for the plan to have a little better route that's safer and doesn't strain our utilities, our facilities during a holiday. So we will meet at the Paramount at 1:30 and then we will walk to the train station for the program beginning at 2:30. We'll pause in the middle of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard for a song and a few words recognizing what we did with renaming that street several years ago and appreciating that. People have worked really hard on the program. The emphasis is on children and also it's the legacy lives our beloved community. And King University has combined the last couple of years with their faith and culture speakers. And this year is Father Gregory Boyle, who works with gangs in either Los Angeles or San Diego. I can't remember. I've read his book Tattoos of the Heart. He is a tremendous speaker and has turned lives around with young people and old people who are part of gangs. So it should be a great speaker. He's 7 o'clock that evening at Lee Street Baptist Church. There's lots of other activities and real proud of our YWCA is doing a lot to gather all the information about the regional celebrations and get the publicity out so people have opportunities to recognize Dr. King and recognize and think about our world and communities that we live in. And for me, for grateful this morning at a meeting, quite a few people really appreciate the community that we live in, the caring community that we have. But I started it off just appreciating hot water, just standing in the shower this morning, waking up and also with a sore joint with lots of hot water and thinking about people around the world and particularly now with conflict and some of our soldiers and folks, families that are living in hard circumstances. And just really appreciating what we have here, starting with a morning shower, so anyway.
I'd like to ask, before you dabble in self, that we have just a moment of silence to Maylin's point for all of our service people that are all around the world right now and in dire straits.
And their families.
And their families. If we could just take a moment.
Any other comments or additions this evening? And thank y'all, and I really appreciated the YWCA's presentation. And always great to see our young people participate in different things. We'll see you next month in February here, but a lot of time in between. Thank you.
Okay, I'm so excited because this is the most popular soup that we've been requesting. We make lots of soup from scratch. And listen, soup from scratch is delicious. Not only is it delicious, but you can make a big pot of it and freeze, freeze a lot of it. This is a butternut squash. Now, I know, we just heard from someone, they said it looks a little intimidating. What do you do with this thing? Bam, no. What you do, Farmer Larry's going to show you.